Okay, everyone, I want to thank you all for joining today. It's 12:05. On August 9th, we are recording this virtual town hall meeting. This is something that we wanted to offer for our faithful, so that people can be a part of it and understand more what's going on in our church. Naturally, we haven't been able to have a spring general assembly, and so in turn, we haven't also then been able to just bring up some discussions about what's been going on, how we've been handling everything, and what we will need to do going on into the near future. So, we're gonna start now with prayer. I'm gonna offer my opening remarks. Our parish council president, George Reiman, who's on the phone, will chime in. I'm gonna allow him to speak, and then from there, our treasurer, Matthew Stankiewicz, will offer some financials and some input regarding our stewardship. And then Dr. Genie Novas, who is helping co-chair our COVID-19 committee team, will give us kind of some updates about what we've been doing as a community with what we are dealing with. And then we'll offer some opportunity for questions and answers, and then we'll finish from there, okay? So just stay muted. I'll unmute you because we can control everything from our end, and then we will go from there. So, we'll offer prayer at this time, and then we will begin our virtual town hall for St. Ectatius Greek Orthodox Church. Okay. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Comfort of the Spirit of truth, present in all places and filling all things. Treasure of good things, the giver of life, come and take and abide in us, cleanse us of every stain, and save all our souls, O Good One. Amen. Okay. Again, thank you, everyone, for joining us. We will not take too much of your time. Again, our first goal was to just see everyone, so it's great to see all your faces. We miss all of you. We love all of you. Many of you have been able to come back to church. Some of you have not, and everything is understandable, but we're here for each and every one of you to support you and be there for you. So, we are now into about the fifth, sixth month of the pandemic of the COVID-19 virus. And as you have seen, a lot has changed, and thus, we've been able to adapt appropriately as a community. First, from my standpoint, as your priest, a lot has changed. Naturally, as we see, our divine services are at a point now where we're allowing 90 parishioners to attend every service. Technically, we are in the span that we can allow 100 people to come in a service, but we allow for the 90 max capacity, because then there's also that includes the priests, the chanters, the guild members, anyone that helps out for those divine services. We are now, obviously, in the fast of the Decapitabos, or the 15 days of the Dormition of the Philotokos. And so now, we are preparing ourselves to celebrate that great feast day. We had originally put to have two divine liturgies on the 15th, which have already filled to capacity through reservations. And then, we have now received the blessing from Azemene's Metropolitan Nathaniel to then offer a third service the night before. So, this upcoming Friday, August 14th, we will offer what is called a vigil in type of way. We will be offering the Great Vespers Orthodox Divine Liturgy for the Feast of the Dormition of the Philotokos. This is another opportunity for 90 people, parishioners, to come to our church to witness the beautiful services and the hymns, and then to partake in the divine liturgy. Divine Liturgy on Friday night will probably begin around 8:30, and we should be done with the whole services by 10 o'clock at night. That has already started to fill up as well, too, so if you are interested, please, I encourage all of you to fill out that sign-up genius form and go from there. I'm gonna now allow George Reiman to bring up his thoughts and points as our parish council president. From there, I'm gonna allow Matthew Stankiewicz, our treasurer, to bring up our financials and regarding stewardship, as you've been hearing, our stewardship appeal for the past few weeks. And then, as I said, Dr. Genie Novas will speak regarding COVID-19, what preparations and regulations we're offering for everyone, and then I'll just kind of do some recap and answer some questions that people have sent. And if you want to, as I said, go onto the Q&amp;A area to all the panelists and send the questions, and we will answer them accordingly. So, at this time, I'm gonna allow George Reiman to talk. George, do you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Father?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you, George. Go ahead, continue. Go for it.
Well, thank you, Father, and thank everybody who's attending this town hall for joining us. You know, we've all been through a lot together this year, and I'm really proud to be a part of a community that's come together the way we have to help each other, the way St. Ectatius has. We've been through some challenging times, like Father said, really unprecedented. But we continue on together, thanks to the spiritual and motivational leadership of Father Chris, the additional support of Father Chris Gruhulis, and the contributions of so many stewards through their giving of their time, talents, and treasures. I mean, things like, you know, I know I'm gonna miss some stuff, so it can't be an exhaustive list. While we've been having these services, and we've had the absolvee, which has been showing up and helping with these services, we've had the acolyte leaders continuing to serve in the altar, the folks that are working to make it possible to livestream our services, which we never had before. We have our guild, which is led by Lucy and Steve Raffus, and the folks that serve on it, like Gula Trakas, who's been at pretty much every service, I think, since we've been able to go live. You have the folks on the COVID committee who have worked to ensure that we can come together and worship together in safety. The philanthropists, the parish council, and the various other committees, working to support our church and the community. And we have our office staff, the janitorial staff, that help keep things up and running. The stewards that are working behind the scenes, they help with things like keeping the church beautiful, but they're doing things like anonymously refinishing our doors, which have been weathered over the years, to tending to our gardens. There are so many examples. We go on and on, but it's really a beautiful thing that we have come together the way we have. But there's still a lot to do. As I said, we're kind of still in these times, and there's a lot of uncertainty. Now, while Matt's gonna get into the financials, and I think currently, we're sitting in pretty good shape, but we have a whole year to go through. And we're sitting in good shape because of the continued giving, generous giving of our stewards, either through regular stewardships or donations. I think we had an individual who even, when we couldn't have people in the church, stood up and supplemented the candle money that we typically get on a Sunday. They did so anonymously. How beautiful is that? And everybody else who stepped up and done what they could. But you know, we have a situation now that we're gonna miss out on some revenue items that we typically would see, whether it be Greek Fest, which, you know, the Greek Fest committee, I gotta tell you, they work long and hard trying to come up with a solution to keep that going. But ultimately, with the uncertainty by what's going back and forth in the political scene, along with the concern that we maintain safety for those who attend and for our volunteers, we've kind of decided to push that back this year. That's a large piece of revenue we're gonna miss. And there are other fundraisers that we've had. Now, we've had people that, like I said, through the giving of others, luckily, we've done pretty well. And I think the parish council would come together and help to blunt some of the effects by getting a Payroll Protection Act loan, which helped to offset some of that loss and helped us to keep our vital employees paid. We got a 90-day extension or deferment on principal payments, which will be tacked on to the back of our loan, so we're gonna have to pay it. But there's cash flow that the bank allowed us to defer until later, and that'll really help us through some of this crunch. But we still have a long way to go, and again, Matt's gonna get into that. So, hopefully, that we continue to do what we can. Everybody's in a different position, so those of us that can give, that's great. And you know, give however you can, whether it's a dollar or it's a thousand. Whatever you can is helpful. We also have some things that we've been doing around the church to continue to maintain it. I mean, we still, life goes on, as they say. We've redone the parking lot to protect our investment in that that we made a couple of years ago. When I say redone, we did the general maintenance that's required, which is crack filling and sealing. And now, we have stripes in the lot, so you can actually know where to park. We're taking a look at our roofs in the facility. We have the church, which we've been playing whack-a-mole fixing leaks for years, and also in the community center, which is getting to a point where I think we may need to do some serious work. We're in the process of soliciting some bids. We're gonna work together with the Metropolis and the Metropolis Board, who has a specialized committee on buildings and grounds, to help with their guidance and figuring out how to go forward in a way that's economical, that we can take care of our investment in our beautiful church. More to come on that as we gather information. Hopefully, God willing, we'll have a general assembly and get together, and we'll be able to discuss that then. We're also looking for innovative ways to, you know, we've already started by doing virtual church and live streaming. The Metropolis continues, or the Metropolitan Azemene continues to think outside the backs and figure out how we can do more within our community to bring people closer to the church. And we're in a, here's an innovative idea on how to enhance religious education and our understanding of orthodoxy, and like to work with our community to kind of spearhead that initiative. More to come. Don't wanna steal the thunder. We'll probably be having a, keep looking at your emails. We'll have an announcement on a town hall that will be coming shortly, discussing the timing of that event and what to expect. But anyways, I just wanted to thank you all for your joining us on this town hall. And like I said, I'm really, I think it's really beautiful the way everybody's come together. And with that, I'll pass it on to Matt.
Go ahead, Matt. All right. Hi, everyone. I just want to start off by reminding you about the budget that the General Assembly passed at the end of last year. As usual, the budget is approximately balanced. This year's budget was approved with a small deficit. Over the past few years, the parish council has worked to reduce expenses by as much as possible. As a result, what was passed for this year is already a fairly bare-bones budget. There's not much to cut during lean times, like we're experiencing right now. Nevertheless, the parish councils worked hard to find savings during this time. We've deferred principal payments on the mortgage for three months. We've also applied for and received PPP funds, which we expect to be forgiven when that application process begins. We've communicated all of this with the community as quickly as possible, so that everyone can have the most current information. Now, looking at the pie chart here, knowing that we've done almost all that we can to reduce expenses, I wanted to outline simply where our revenue comes from in the church. Our total church revenue is approximately $885,000. A little over half our revenue comes from stewardship, and another 15% comes from candles and trays. This money is the most consistent and stable form of revenue for our community. This is our steward supporting our church, paying for our bills, and taking ownership and responsibility of our community. We have a lot of monthly recurring bills, just like a household. We have the mortgage to pay, utilities, payroll, and other miscellaneous expenses. It's much better for us to have a reliable monthly income, so that our bills can get paid. Combined, that's only 70% of our total revenue, though, and we still need more money. Some of that's made up through gym rentals, some through advertising in The Voice, and other money still through miscellaneous donations, such as funerals, Christmas, and Pasca donations. For many years, we've relied on fundraisers to fill the gap in our budget. It's always been a concern of this community that we rely on these fundraisers, mainly Greek Fest, to pay for our operating expenses. Every year, you know, we worry about the weather, attendance, sales, because we know that this fundraiser is crucial over all of our necessary expenses for the year. This year, the forced cancellation of almost all of our fundraisers has presented us with a unique challenge, but also an opportunity. Father, if you go to the next slide. Okay, so this is more of a breakdown. On the left column of this slide, you can see a simplified version of the budget that the General Assembly passed last year. You can see a breakdown of the revenue categories that we just discussed. Below that, you see our expenses, which are slightly higher than that, resulting in a budget deficit of almost $39,000. Obviously, a lot has changed since these budget numbers were approved. In the middle column, you could see our projections for the end of the year based on the information that we now know. Our stewardship is still on track to come in at a budgeted amount, but our candle and tray revenue is down due to the church closure, especially over Pasca. Even now, while the church is open and people are putting money upon God, that money is substantially less due to fewer number of church attendees. Our whole rental income has dipped as we had to restrict access temporarily, but we're seeing interest in that again. Biggest impact to our budget has been in our fundraisers, as the only fundraising fellowship event that we had this year was the Gluttony. Based on all of this, we are projecting lost revenue of $226,000. The parish council's been taking active steps to help mitigate this loss. We applied for and received the PPP funding in the amount of $103,000. This helped sustain our payroll and mortgage during the period while our church was closed. These funds helped tremendously, and this loan is expected to be completely forgiven. The parish council also worked with our lenders to defer principal mortgage payments for three months while our church was closed. This came with no penalty to the church, and the principal will be tacked on to the back end of the loan. Additionally, there were some small savings due to a reduction of working hours and a reduction in the utilities and supplies. The net result is that our projected deficit has climbed to almost $135,000. Additionally, to start the year, the parish council had to draw on the line of credit to bridge our revenue until January. As a result, we started the year with a $19,000 borrowed from our line of credit. When you add that to our projected deficit, we're projecting an end-of-the-year negative bank balance of almost $154,000. So, that was a lot of numbers, a lot of information, but the real question is, what does this all mean? So, simply put, what the church had been counting on just won't come in. While the parish councils worked diligently to reduce expenses and find whatever money we could, the loss of our fundraisers is too great an obstacle to overcome through expense cutting, and we need everyone's help. We realize this pandemic has affected all of our community in different ways. Some people are really struggling to get by as their jobs have been impacted. But to those who are able, we are asking everyone to consider increasing their stewardship to make up for the lost fundraising revenue. Any amount of increase is greatly appreciated. We're hoping that many of you can consider at least a $500 increase this year. As of the email letter, that would be an increase of roughly $84 a month. To demonstrate how seriously the leadership in this community is taking this request, many members of our parish council, our stewardship committee, fundraising committees, and our philanthropists have already committed to increasing their stewardship. To date, we have received over $20,000 towards our goal of recovering all of the revenue from these lost fundraisers. We're 10% of the way there, and we could really use everyone's cooperation and consideration for this program. We all come together in this difficult time to lighten the load and share the costs, so that our community at St. Ectatius can continue to thrive. I think with that, I'm ready to turn it over to Genie.
Hi, everyone. Okay. Hi, everyone. It's nice to virtually see her here from everyone in the community. I see some people I haven't seen for a while have joined and welcome, and thank you all for your love and care for the St. Ectatius community. Father Chris asked for a COVID committee to be formed. We have several members from the community, pretty well represented from medical, from physicians. We have legal representation, and we have teachers as well, people involved in teaching and being able to guide our schools. This is important so that our community feels safe in coming back to the church physically. We make sure that we're following all of the legal guidelines as far as whatever the governor might propose in terms of restrictions, get-togethers. The Metropolis is also working with the local government to assure that we're all on the same page, and we follow that direction for the church. We have had quite a lot of details done, as anyone else who is trying to keep up with all of the COVID rules in terms of opening any businesses or services, from cleaning to how you're staffing, social distancing, proper masking, and also keeping proper records of who has visited the church. One point I want to make, it's very important, if you attend a service physically, that you do sign in. It's okay. You know, we want everyone to sign up, so we don't exceed our numbers. But if you do come, we will re-sign you in, along with a phone number and/or email. So, in the event someone was sick, we're able to contact you. And the schools are planning, the Greek school and the day school are planning to be face-to-face school, contrary to a lot of the local public schools. And we are able to do that safely. It's, a lot of the public schools have all kinds of issues with unions and inability to social distance due to their physical plant. But fortunately, we have a great physical plant at St. Ectatius. We have the rooms, and we have the people willing to do it, and we're hoping for a good school year coming forward this year. We, you know, temperature checks can be done, but it's a very low yield. But that is one thing we're entertaining. We also appreciate any donations for masks, cleaning supplies. We have received some through the summer, and that's important for the church. And a special thank you to Perry Cleaning, doing a lot of work for the church. And that's about it. It's a very evolving process. Everything's changing, and we're just trying to keep up as best we can and follow the guidelines and keep our communities safe.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Genie. I'm gonna chime in now, and then we're also gonna answer some questions. I first want to thank Mr. George Reiman, Mr. Matthew Stankiewicz, and Dr. Genie Novas for their efforts and for their communication for us today. It's really the truth, everyone, and I know you guys have all realized it, but our parish council, our ministries, our philanthropists, our office staff, our maintenance people, I don't know about you, but I am incredibly humbled to be working with them, because they have really gone above and beyond. We were on top of everything. We have been attentive. We have ministered. We have addressed. We have messaged. We have communicated, everything and everything, so that we can bring some sort of semblance to each and every one of you. And it's been unbelievable, the effort that they've done, and I just give thanks to God for our parish council, for our ministry heads, and for each and every one of you, because it has been a very difficult year. I will admit, as your priest, it's been very strenuous, because naturally, at the seminary, they don't teach you about pandemics and how to install livestream services and whatnot in your churches. But we all learn. We've all done the best that we could, and so far, so good. I really thank them. And as Dr. Genie pointed out, that's the key word there, this is an evolving process. So, everything going forward is going to continue to evolve. That includes our ministries. That includes our schools, and naturally, our services and everything going from there. So, I'm gonna start with the services. I'm gonna bring a few things to attention. And then, from there, we're gonna do questions and comments and answers, and then we'll go from there. So, one question that was brought up, thank you, Eric, for your question. So, we are offering multiple service for August 15th for Panayias. Has the discussion, or is there offering, a multiple service is gonna be offered on Sunday? For right now, the short answer is not yet. We're gonna see how Panayias goes to be a test run. This is because, A, we would be using predominantly the church for both services. The thought originally, and I know they discussed this with the COVID committee, with the parish council, was to actually set up two services, one in the church and one in the gymnasium. Yet, there was some time where we had a small rental of the gymnasium for a small basketball group that was approved by the Metropolis and the local CDC guidelines. So naturally, we're still, they utilize the gym for that capacity. So then, in turn, we couldn't set up the gymnasium to make it a makeshift church. So, in turn, we have now received the blessing from Azemene's to offer the services simultaneously, or one after the other, in the church setting. But we have to make sure that we have cleaned, disinfected, and prepared the entire edifice of the church where we are in for the next service. So, this upcoming Saturday for the Panayia service, we have purchased what is called almost like a Mr. Sprayer, in which we have received the solutions, medical-grade solutions that are used to clean and disinfect larger areas. And that was donated by some parishioners of ours as well, too, as well as all the other medical supplies for our church, for the cleaning products, for the Clorox wipes, for the hand sanitizers, for the HEPA filters that were also donated by our Greek School PTO and many other entities, so that we can offer not only our schools, but our second liturgy. So, realistically, to the question, we're gonna see how Saturday goes, and as long as we have Father Chris still with us, because there are other churches that are now, unfortunately, with this pandemic, some clergy have gotten ill, some clergy have not been able to fulfill their ministry, their duties appropriately, and so Father Chris had to be traveling the past couple of weeks, and he might have to do that in the future, so we just can't guarantee anything. Ideally, I would like to offer a second liturgy, so that we can allow 90 more people to be in the services. The one thing I do want to reiterate and express to everyone is, I do, my own personal opinion, I do not foresee our churches opening fully for the rest of the year. That's my honest opinion. All the way through December, I do not foresee our churches fully opening to a larger capacity. So that means probably through Christmas, we're most likely gonna be at the 90 mark for every service. Obviously, for larger services, such as Christmas, we'll probably have to offer multiple. The hardest one definitely is gonna be our feast day for St. Ectatius coming November. But we'll, obviously, this is an evolving situation. Once we learn more and we get more information, we'll do what we have to do, and we will go forward from there. So, that's regarding the services. And then, the second question was, have services possibly in a large tent outside would increase capacity? It has been a thought. We originally thought about doing that, but the rental of a large tent is quite expensive, as we have seen in the Greek Fest capacity. And naturally, I think there's also regulations to the size of the tent and to the amount of people that we can have congregated, even in an outside setting, similar to restaurants, and we would have to get approval both from the village and from the Metropolis if we were to offer that. Listen, we have two large edifices, the church and the gymnasium. That's why we didn't want to pull the trigger for the outdoors. It was a thought already brought up. And naturally, we know we're in Chicago as well, too, where it could be 100 one day and the next day 50 with a chance of snow somehow. So, we just don't know. So that's why we just also were trying to be practical and rational for everyone to be able to come in those ways. Let's see. It could always be a thought. I'm not, we're not ones against it. Let's just see how that would evolve. The other question that was also brought up was, and this is now my point with the schools, is Sunday School. Yes, Sunday School will not return in person, at least for the foreseeable future. Sunday School will be done remotely. We will be talking, we have Mrs. Catherine Dagless and Mr. Peter Vico still as our Sunday School directors, and I can't thank them enough. They really go above and beyond with those teachers to really educate and edify our kids for this year. The reason why that we are not going in person full is because, since we're only allowed to have 90 people per service, I can't even have, our Sunday School technically registered last year, we had about 200 students. Now, on a given Sunday, naturally, only about 100 students would arrive. We still can't accommodate that many students in our school practicing social distancing and wearing the masks. So, with that being said, we are gonna begin remote learning with them, with registration and date to be announced soon. And then, from there, we will offer, at least for the short time period... And then from there, we will offer, at least for the short time period, a possible retreat on a monthly basis where the kids from Sunday school can meet in person for some religious edification. Whether that's a Saturday, whether that's on a Sunday afternoon, we don't know exactly, but that's gonna evolve as well too, because we still want the kids to find some sort of opportunity to at least get together, even in the physical sense, even if that's outside, as we did over the summer with like our bonfires, where we allowed to practice social distancing, the kids are still able to be together and we could talk about our faith and grow from there as well too. So that's kind of what's gonna be going on with Sunday school. Jeanie pointed out that with day school, yes, our day school is meeting in person following the CDC and the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines, as well as whatever Governor Pritzker and our Metropolis has offered as well too. We we are looking for students for the second, the two-year-old, the three-year-old class. Our older class for the fours and the pre-K enrichment has a good amount of students. But naturally, with all the schools going remote, many parents are deciding to keep their kids at home, which is understandable. But just know that we have prepared. We have a great director, new director, Mrs. Melissa Ratner, who has great experience even this past spring for setting up for COVID and to prepare our school and our teachers for this upcoming school year for our day school. And we really look forward to it, even to the capacity, even if it's minimal, to whatever we can to have our children in our day school program, in the morning program. Our Greek school, under the auspices and direction of the Aquinas Mary's Harris, have really gone above and beyond with their incredible teachers for them planning to also have in-person teaching as well too. We are thankful, as I said before, to the Greek School PTO, for they have purchased 12 HEPA filters for every classroom. Those are medical-grade HEPA filters that'll help circulate and cleanse the air in every classroom that'll also be utilized for our day school and Sunday school classrooms whenever they are to reconvene in person as well too. And then in turn, we then have everything else that the Greek school's preparing, both with wearing of masks, social distancing. We have received an abundant amount of medical supplies, cleaning products, and face masks for people to have just in case we don't have them, but we really are evolving that as well too. And there will be a request probably coming out sometime soon for anyone or any contacts that you might have that have medical supplies or hand sanitizer or any stuff like that, that your church will need it coming up in the near future as we continue to prepare ourselves and have those offered for our programs and for our schools going forward. Ministries, ministries realistically will be evolving. Many meetings we have offered have been done via Zoom, and so in turn, our ministries have been offered that way as well too. So for like youth ministries, for the time being, we will be offering some stuff via Zoom, but if we have opportunities to offer stuff in person, we will do that, and we will get the blessing of the Metropolis and follow state guidelines and CDC guidelines. But we want to have the children and parents to have that opportunity to see each other somewhat face-to-face, even if it's from a distance, just so we can build some sort of relationship camaraderie. That's one of the pains and emotional sadness that I have witnessed as a clergyman this year, is noticing the sadness that people felt since we've all had to distance ourselves for the protection of each other. So that'll be for the youth ministries. One idea that we're already offering for youth ministries, that'll be coming up at the end of the summer, is a St. Nictarius drive-in movie night. We have a large edifice and we have the opportunity to offer a drive-in movie. We have a couple of families who said they will offer a projector and a screen so that we can put on a movie probably in the back parking lot, and that people can either sit in their cars or they can bring a chair, we'll socially distance, get together, talk, joke around and watch a movie, and at least have some sort of fellowship in that capacity, in a minimal way, at least, in some capacity. So that's that. Our philanthropists and outreach ministries. Now, this is a unique one because an orthophobe has been having some detailed meetings as well too, and they too are affected by this COVID pandemic, not only financially, because they can't have their greatest fundraiser, their fashion show, but naturally, because of how they're gonna minister now to those that need help. And so they too have been evolving their ministry. I know they recently just went to the Cathedral in Chicago to help feed the hungry with prepackaged foods, and they are going to be offering more options for us to help and get involved with the philanthropists so that we can truly minister to the greater Northwest suburbs over here in Palatine area. So be on the lookout for that for our philanthropists as well too. And then our outreach ministry that is working in tandem with our philanthropists is working exclusively with the Palatine Food Pantry, the Palatine Township, Journeys the Road Home, which is a housing subsidy for destitutes and homeless that can't find home or work during this time. We gave a substantial donation as a community sometime in April of about $5,000 to Journey the Road Home to house the homeless. That was something that was gifted from us that was then used for that appropriate reason. And then in turn, we are then and then in turn, we are then offering more advancements into that level as well too. So I just want everyone to keep in mind what we're gonna be doing and how we can evolve ourselves when we're really working with each other to help and minister to the needy during this difficult time. And then, I'm trying to think if I had the last thing on my agenda. I believe that's it for now. We answered some of the questions. Does anyone have any other questions that they would like to ask? Or you can either type it in the Q and A or raise your hand. There is a, I believe there's a marking on your tab with the three dots that allows you to raise your hand. If you'd like to raise your hand, please let me know so that we can answer your question. And then if not, we can kind of wrap up and go from there. Because I don't see everyone, so you gotta either type it or raise your hand. Now, everyone, don't be shy. I know we haven't seen each other in four or five months, but I wanna, I wanna see if we can answer everyone's questions as best as we can. But again, the, the truth of the matter is, and if anyone has a question, please ask. The truth of the matter is, we really need everyone's support and love. This is gonna be a difficult year. It was, it hurt, it hurt me, and I know it hurts all of you, that we can't break bread and enjoy our Greek Fest and something that brings in so much income for our community. The golf outing that almost happens almost annually, that was going very well. Unfortunately, we can't do it to the great capacity that we want to do it this year. Our smoker, that was a fundraiser well too, that's not gonna happen. And then naturally, the same thing with our social. Our social almost kind of took over the dinner dance. And it's in the word, social. It was for us to socialize and just to be with each other, and unfortunately, we can't. So I just want everyone to understand that, you know, we hurt, we hurt with all of you. I, it's not the church, it's not a singular. This is a pain that we are all feeling. And I want you to all know that we are there for you and that in any way that we can to help and support you, especially spiritually, especially emotionally, please reach out to myself, please reach out to anyone that you know that we can to help you in whatever capacity. But, you know, please don't, don't, don't go on this trip alone. We are here for you and we want to be there for you because we are one community. And I just want to thank, again, our parish council, I want to thank George Reimans, I want to thank Dr. Jeanie, our COVID committee. There are many people on the committee that help out in many different ways. I want to thank Matt Stankowitz for his efforts with the financials, our stewardship, and everyone. I mean, this is really a team effort. There's no one person or one thing that's handling everything, but we are all in this together. Please remember that, you know, we are celebrating the Panayias Fest this week. Come to any of the Parochial Services. We have a Parochial Service every night beginning at 6:45, 7 PM. The small vigil that's happening on Friday night beginning at 6 PM that we offer divine liturgy has spots. It is encouraged, I'm stating this, please, when you're coming for Panayias, only choose one service. Don't come to all three. You choose one and then wrote, and then allow other people to come to the other services. So if you've already chosen for Saturday, don't come to the Friday night one. If you come to the Friday night one, don't come on Saturday. Try to, try to allow this so that more people could come to more services. And then we will evolve, as we said, and figure out more ways that we can offer more spirituality, more religious education. We do want to thank His Eminence, which is Paul and Nathaniel, for even contemplating us to be a part of that religious literacy as well too. He is looking forward to us getting involved with that so that we can expand that and learn more about our faith, not only us as a community, but as a collaborative group with the other parishes in the Metropolis of Chicago. And continue to be on the lookout for more advanced ministries, more evolving ministries. I really want to, I know people have been asking, they would like more videos, some more YouTube, more content on our YouTube channel. So we are looking forward to enhancing that as well too. So be on the lookout for that as well too, which might be in the form of like Q and A with Father Chris, where people might submit videos. This is for the youth and for adults, for our religious education, for our Bible studies, and advancing with like an Orthodoxy 101. And it'll be offered for all of us so that we can be edified. And even myself, I always learn something new after each event that we hold all together. Well, it's 12:45, I don't have many other, no other questions. Everyone seems to be kind of relaxed. It is the midsummer, it's 91 degrees outside, and many of us want to go get some sun at least, or at least to enjoy the beautiful weather. I, again, I'm just telling all of you, we love you, we miss you, and we thank you. You guys have gone above and beyond these last six months. Please continue to support your church. This is a communal effort, this is all of us together, and know that we are doing this so that we could support each other and be there for each other. And then lastly, I remind everyone again, if anyone is going through anything, financially, psychologically, emotionally, or any kind of feelings whatsoever, please reach out to me, reach out to our parish council, reach out to our church, Father Chris Corhulis, even Deacon Zachariah, whatever you need. We are here for you and we are all together. I pray all of you have a blessed and beautiful day. Dia Fons, Panayian, Pater Nimon, Kiriyushu, Christel, Thos, Soleil, Sun, Kiosso, Simas, with the prayers of our holy fathers, Lord Jesus Christ, our God. Have mercy on us and save us, amen. God bless you, we love you, stay safe and stay well. We'll talk soon. God bless.